Notice is hereby given of Friendswood City Council Regular Meeting. It will be held at 5:30 on Monday, January 5th, at Friendswood City Hall, Council Chambers, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. Regarding the items of business according to the agenda listed below. Call the meeting to order. Invitation, Pastor Lynn Colby, Calvary Chapel. And then if you'd remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge.
Let's bow our heads for prayer. Lord Jesus, we thank you so much for the privilege of coming to you before we begin the meeting, to have, to seek your will, to seek your counsel, to seek your wisdom. And the things that are going to be discussed this evening and the things on the agenda. Lord, I thank you that as we begin a new year, we pray for your protection over the city, over the council members, over the mayor, all those involved in making the decisions for this city. And again, we thank you that we can pray openly here before you and seek your will in all these important matters. Lord, we pray for protection over our policemen, our first responders, for the teachers, for the schools in our district. And thank you again for allowing us to be here tonight to conduct the business that you've given us. And again, we just thank you for the privilege of having you in our hearts and in our minds. So may we do all things tonight for your glory and in your power. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag and I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one and steady, under God, one and indivisible.
Communication from the public to comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act. The City Council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizens' comment period. Melinda, I don't have any cards. Is there anybody that'd like to speak to us?
No, sir, not at 4:30.
Okay. Oh. Okay.
This is my opportunity to speak.
Okay. We'll do this at 7:00 as well, but...
Okay. I knew there was two opportunities. I just didn't know which one would be most advantageous to take.
Well, he's gonna tell you about the cards. John, you want...
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, I'll hold up the yellow one in two minutes and the red one.
It won't take that long.
Okay. And just give us your name and not your address.
Okay. Not the address? Okay. Craig Campbell. I'm a resident of Friendswood. What I want to take a few minutes of your time this evening is to express some concern that I recently had when I got my utility bill here recently. I do have two meters. I do have a sprinkler system. And I've got some handouts here. I don't know if it's appropriate to give those to the council, whatever. But I want to show you my previous bill and my current bill and the changes that impacted me due to the rate changes that you all made on October. In summary, I guess because of my water consumption, and I don't use a lot of water, it appears my bill basically went up in the vicinity of 80 percent from what, at least I think what it should have been based upon my consumption. You look at the water, you look at the sewer, and particularly the sprinkler part of the bill. And the sprinkler part is the most alarming of the increase, what the others did as well. So I'd like the council to understand that the changes that you made, I'm not sure how much time and effort was spent on looking at individuals when you did your study and everything and running specific scenarios for some of the residents. But it is quite obvious, and I'll leave my copies of my bill and the summary that I did, that I got impacted individually considerably due to the rate changes that you all made. I know you made some changes at the last board meeting. I'm already aware of that. I talked to Cantino already and tried to understand a little bit more detail what took place and why it took place. But frankly, even upping a 3,000 gallon amount in the base fee is not going to come anywhere close to offsetting the increases, at least from my perspective, that resulted from the rate changes. So I'd like to leave those with the board. And I guess my request is frankly to somebody to take a much closer look at what took place and the changes that were made. And particularly like residents like myself that do have a sprinkler system and one that I don't use frankly from the period of September through March, and I don't use a sprinkler during the winter months. And yet I'm going to get charged $42 for it sitting in the ground. And I invested over $1,000 to put that second meter in. And frankly, I'm never going to recoup that given the current approach. So I'll leave these here, their copies of my current bill and my previous bill. If you would look at those, I'd sure like to understand what the path forward is to reconsider what you did and reconsider some of the changes that you made in your rates.
Thank you very much, Craig. Work session. Item 5A. Discussion regarding an update on Capitol Project. Patrick?
It's just got night. Steve?
I'm not dressed for it.
It's a mall skate.
Happy New Year, council. A few things to highlight off the agenda item, the library expansion. We anticipate going out for bids later this month with bids coming back next month and hopefully coming to you in March with a recommendation on how we move forward on the library expansion. Later this evening, we'll be talking about our construction manager risk for the fire station four and the fire station behind the Public Safety Building. The other two large projects, the round one of the street improvements are moving along very well. We'll be meeting with our consultant later this week. I don't want to give you a specific timetable when we'll be going out for bids, but we're making good progress on that project. And the final one I'll talk about today is the Whispering Pines Friendswood Link. We're moving right along. I would say considering how much rain we've received in the last 30 days, I would say the contractor is doing an excellent job in, A, trying to keep the current road that we have passable and making progress in getting a new road down. Coming on Wednesday, we will be opening up David Glenn, back to the way it was before, moving one of the crosswalks for the elementary school, and then closing down Oxnard. And we're in the process of notifying all of our citizens that are part of the original group, notifying them the email of these changes, along with the contractor doing signs and detour signs. Those are the main highlights for the Capitol Projects, if you all had any questions.
Any questions, gentlemen? No? Councilmember Gustafson?
Yes, sir.
Sports Park Improvements?
Sports Park Improvements. We have been looking at a bunch of different aspects of that. We were primarily talking with Jamel Smith on doing some of the aspects of it. We're looking at different avenues on how to do that and maybe become, for portions of it, our own construction manager, our own project. So we're trying, I realize that as you've read these, it's pretty much been the same thing for probably the last three months.
Yeah.
But we're trying to be very mindful of how we're spending taxpayers' dollars as we're going through that, also knowing that during this time period, we wouldn't have been doing anything anyway. So we're...
I understand. I'm just being asked about schedule.
Schedule? I would imagine in the next couple of months, we will be bringing something toward, to council.
Okay.
And how we're going to proceed and kind of along those lines.
Okay. It's going to become a more high-profile item.
Especially as we get into spring and sports are starting to get moving again.
Signups are underway.
Yes, sir.
Online right now, so... Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Item B. B, discussion regarding local sales tax options. Does anybody want to open up the discussion? Councilmember Rocky?
I'm confused what's on the agenda here, what's to discuss.
It's a workshop, and what we're discussing is things that we discussed at the retreat concerning how this would be advantageous to be used, you know, the features and benefits of it, but how to go about it. And my recollection is rehabbing our streets was a high priority for us. Y'all chime in if you want to, but go ahead.
Well, as I recall, we've talked about if there was a sales tax, we'd like to reserve a portion of it for our streets. I thought it was interesting at the retreat because we had the CEDC people first thing in the retreat and...
Mayor, could I respond of order?
Go ahead.
Looks like we're launching into a discussion, and we haven't really made the motion to discuss.
It's not a motion.
It's a work.
It's a work. My bad. My apologies.
Thank you.
Can I continue or...
Yes, you may.
That's all right. But thank you for the clarification. Is this thing on? Is it on? Okay. So CEDC came in and they made a plea that if there was a sales tax increase, they'd like to have a big piece of it. And then the EMS and the fire group came in and they made a plea they'd want to have a big piece of it. So I think there's a lot of groups that would like to see it divvied up a certain way. And it was my recollection that we talked a bit about doing something similar to what we did with the bond, getting a citizen group together, letting them explore and come back and advise us whether they think it would pass, how it should be used, you know, that kind of stuff. And I thought, you know, why mess with success? We had success with the bond. They came back with a much more modest proposal and something that we thought we can sell, and it was successful. So I just think we should, we should look at that again and have a citizens' group put together.
Bless you. Councilmember Hill?
I think we ought to narrow the scope down to maybe three items that we consider maybe the top three priorities. I know we can't split it up much thinner than that anyway. And I think if everybody agrees the streets is probably the top priority, well, then we got that one. We know what that is. And so we're maybe concerned about the other, what's that, quarter of a cent? And I think that that's where the discussion should head, is what do we want to do? I think even on economic development, if it's used for that, it can be used to build new streets that might help the flow of traffic in town. But that's what I would like to see us, and I might be presumptuous, but I think that the first quarter cent is definitely going to go to street repair. We just have to get on top of that. So whatever you guys decide.
Councilmember McGinnis?
And I think I said this the last time, is there any scenario that we could ask for this sales tax without creating a Type A or a Type B committee? I believe we can do it for the streets maintenance, but from what I've read, it seems like if we want to do anything else with any economic development, it's got to go through a Type A or a Type B committee. But I would like to get the definitive answer. My preference would be not to create another committee that might, you know, have a different agenda. You know, I think the strategic vision should come from us and the CEDC group.
Since everybody's talking, I feel like I had to chime in. No, I think, I agree with Councilman Hill. I think that if you're going to do it, well, I think that you have to do a good job of advertising it, you have to do a good job of selling it. And I know as everybody else here, a taxpayer in this community, I think that it should specifically be used for basic infrastructure things, infrastructure items, not any, you know, wouldn't it be nice if we had this, or wouldn't it be nice if we had that? The thing that's intriguing about it is when you have, you know, 40 percent of the sales tax in the city estimated, 40 percent of the sales tax in the community being paid by those outside the city limits, those outside the city limits are utilizing our roadways and they're utilizing our infrastructure. So, you know, short of going towards basic infrastructure items, I don't know that I would be interested in getting behind it. So roads and streets are, as we discussed during the budget process, and I made note of the fact that it seems that the roads get whatever's left over at the end of the discussion. It would certainly be nice to see roadways put to the forefront because they are one of the things that we're absolutely required to provide for our citizens above and beyond a lot of the other stuff that we do. So that's my opinion on it.
Councilmember Enoch?
We've talked about this a lot, and I remember it how Councilmember Rocky remembers it. And to answer your question, Doc, it's, we're allowed to go up to 1.75 percent above the six and a quarter without forming a Type A or Type B. Right now, we're at 1.5 percent, so we're leaving 0.25 percent on the table. Now, if we want to go with the full 2 percent and go to eight and a quarter, then we would have to form a Type A or Type B to get that final quarter percent. Every time we've talked about this, we're all pretty much unified that we think we should go after that last, that quarter percent to 1.75 for the streets. It's just whether or not do we want to go after that last quarter percent where we'd have to form a Type A or Type B? And then what would we do with that? Would it go to CDC? Would it go to Parks and Rec? Would it go to...
PD.
Yeah. I mean, that's where, fire department type things. But if I remember correctly, two meetings ago, I think we said we were ready to form a group to advise us on, take a look at it, as we did with the bond group, and make us some recommendations that we could move forward. I'm still behind that, Roger.
Councilmember Gustafson?
My recollections are similar to Councilman Enoch's and Councilman Rocky's as to what the path forward was going to be. I too see half of this going to the streets and roads at this point. And I think you have an opportunity here with economic development to provide seed money to, if it's handled properly, generate additional tax, additional revenues beyond what's expended from that, essentially seed money. So I'd be very interested in evaluating that possibility.
Thank you. What we're talking about is the, we're at seven and three quarters right now, so, yeah, 7.75. And we're talking about the quarter cent to go to eight. Right, Roger?
Half cent.
Half a cent, go to eight and a quarter. Okay. And a quarter of it, yeah, and that maxes us out, and a quarter of it towards streets, just so the audience understands what we're talking about. And nobody likes the subject of taxes. In this case, what we discussed in our retreat is that the county could come in and all, take, claim the...
We don't take advantage of it, other entities could do it.
Other entities could come and take it from us. So that perked me to listening closer. And I'm in agreement that street maintenance would be, has been a priority of mine in numerous members on the council, if not all. How to administrate it? I've got to go with Jim to narrow the scope and decide how to move forward. I don't have the answer. Yes, Steve, Councilmember Billy, we did talk about the committee. But if we've already got the options chosen, I wouldn't want to have people feeling misinformed if they didn't go along with these three, you know, the options that were just stated, roads, EMS, and CEDC, economic development. So what I'm trying to say is that's what I heard, but it's like we've already heard back from the folks as far as what the choices would be, and you could split it in thirds. But getting voter approval, we'd need to let them understand and be aware that if we didn't approve it, like I said, Galveston County could do it. So that's where my incentive is to, and currently, that would be helping our budget on an annual basis with drive-through traffic to the tune of filling that budget item. That, exactly. And that's the point I was trying to make. Go ahead, Councilmembers Steve, Rocky.
If I may make, try to make the argument for putting a team together first is...
Oh. Yeah, go. No, yeah, I didn't mean to imply that, that I didn't think it was a good idea.
No, I didn't take that as that. I think what a team gets us is we've said things like 40 percent of the money would come from people coming out of that, but we don't really have that as facts. You know, we're assuming, probably intelligently, but we are assuming. So I think if you put a team together, you give them a charter that says, get some real data on this, look at the options, and we can certainly narrow it. I think that's fair. It's not, you know, hey, you'd face headwinds if you came with wanting to spend this money on anything other than these broad categories. I think what the team also does is when they look at it, they give us a real strong feel on whether it's going to pass, whether people are going to buy in. And I think that is probably the most helpful part of it. And it provides a group that if they have presented it, that they would maybe be the group that gets out and helps support it.
Explain it.
And so I think that we, you know, anything that does with taxes, like the bond, I'd really like to hear from a group that spent time on it, to be honest. Because I'm not even at the point where I would vote to put it on the ballot yet, and I would like to hear what people would say and how they would look at it, so. And I think if we, we could take the whole half cent and say, if somebody gave us recommendations and said, spend it all on roads, we can do that. It's just half of it would have to be done, would be end up backing money out of our general fund that we could use on other programs, if that's what we want to do. So there's a lot of ways to slice and dice, and I'd really like to have a group, whether it's 10 people or 20 or whatever, that gets the data and really looks at it, comes back and tells us, hey, you've got no chance of getting this passed, or this is a slam dunk and you really ought to do it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Hill?
I basically agree with everybody, but with, especially with Councilman Scott and the fact that I think it's our duty to direct this group and limit them because, you know, a lot of people will play, I want this, I want that. It is not things that are really absolute essentials to the city. And I would like for the city manager or the staff to prepare a list of exactly what maybe three types of sales tax could be spent on, because I'm still not absolutely clear. I know a quarter can be spent on street maintenance without a committee. And so, but I don't know, I think if you go with economic development, there are many things you can use it for. You could use it for seed money, you could use it for new streets, and I'm sure there's other things. But I would like that spelled out for us so we can make a good, clear choice. But, and I agree that, I think my thoughts are, once we make, we pick our three things that we deem the city needs absolutely the worst, then we let a committee look it over and give us their input and see how they could support it.
Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, just one last thing real quick. First, I would caution, the selling point being that, well, somebody else may come in and take it, because it's been 7.75 forever. And it's interesting, when talking about CEDC, that one of the big selling points pushed, at least in the near term, has been the fact that you have a lower sales tax rate in the city of Friendswood. So now we're going to go out and raise it so that we can utilize it for whatever reason we deem appropriate. Again, just to restate my position, the roads are torn up by a small fraction of percentage of people that don't live here because they're utilizing our roadways, whether they're passing through or coming to visit or whatever. So as taxpayers, we foot the bill for those road repairs that are being utilized or worn out by nonresidents. I think it's fair to ask that they pay for them. So I could certainly support the idea of earmarking a quarter of a percent for the roads if that's what we choose. But I would just be very cautious about how you go out and start trying to sell this. And I think that you're swimming upstream if your sell tactic is, well, if we don't use it, Galveston County's going to take it. So just, that's my two cents on that.
I wasn't aware of that at the time, is why I was bringing it up. Nobody has actually mentioned it. Yeah, yeah. And I didn't know that somebody could, just like I didn't know somebody could come in and change our home occup...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we, in that one meeting with a couple of commissioners three months ago or so, several of them mentioned that, that some of the cities in the county still had a half cent that the county could, the county could take. So they're not unaware that they can, that they can do this.
Councilmember McGinnis?
I just want to point out in one of our handouts from the state comptroller, counter to Councilman Enoch's, I get the impression we could establish an EMS district without going through a Type A or Type B committee. So just, you know, Roger, I guess these are questions we really need to have nailed down as Councilman Hill stated, maybe the staff can really put our options in black and white for us.
Yeah, basically, we're at one and a half percent above the six and a quarter state sales tax. We can go to 1.75, you know, if the voters approve it, under our current processes. Basically, if we want to go after that last quarter percent, we're going to have to form some sort of entity. It's going to be a Type A, Type B, it'd be an EMS district. However we want to go after that last quarter percent, we would have to form some entity outside of our normal procedure, the way we collect sales tax right now. And to me, we sound pretty aligned behind going from 1.5 to 1.75 and dedicating that extra 0.252 street. So maybe that's the direction. We already know we want to do that. And this citizens' group can inform us whether or not it's worthy and worth the effort and the trouble, and can we sell it to form another entity, have another structure, another to form another entity, have another structure, another, another body overseeing it, and then what should that go? Should it all be CDC, should it all be an EMS district? Should we split that into eighths and split it up between a couple there? That may be where we need the guidance.
Anybody else? Councilmember Rocky?
Just as a, as a, as a proposal, could we ask the city manager to put a draft scope for that team together? Which, which includes some of the things we've talked about, we'd want to limit in these areas and this and that, and have them come back next month and we look at just a, you know, if we, if we did put that team together, what kind of scope charter would we give them? Is that, is that a, I think that would help us be a little more defined in what we want.
Do you have enough direction to do something like that, Roger?
Well, what I was planning on doing, based on what you had said, was giving you a concrete list of the different options. Which of those would require a second board or a second governing body, so to speak? Which would not, and that's kind of where I was, that's what I was starting with. If there's something more than that, be happy to.
Does that work?
Do as well.
I, I think that's, I think that's key. I think also what we'd want to do is, uh, is, is, is tell the team what areas they can go and look in and what, you know, what, what's their authority to go look in, what, get what data and, and how, and, and what kind of range of recommendations come back to us. I think, you know, we give them that information, because that's key information to have, but we also have to give them some direction. Which is, as I've heard, we'd like to know if, if, if people in the city would buy into this and agree and vote for it. If so, how should we structure it? What areas does this team think, and we, and, and we put a limit, there's only three areas we're going to allow that money to go for. But how you slice and dice it in the middle is, is, and structure it and all that, is we'd love to hear from them.
Okay, and what I'm hearing from council, I believe, is that you're interested in the street improvement portion, which is limited to a quarter cent. There's a half cent available total, so that, if there are two other components, then you're basically saying an eighth of a cent would go to those other two. The two that have been mentioned were economic development, whether that be for seed money or for new street construction. And the fire EMS district was the other piece that I, I heard. Fire EMS.
Councilmember Gustafson?
I would also, um, and maybe this is just too early on in the process to bring this up, but if the intent is to encourage passage of this, these things tend to have a much better, I, I think they've got a better chance of being accepted if there's some project associated with what the revenue would, uh, would be. Perhaps, uh, a, a, a five-year project plan be associated with these funds might be a good thing to have this group look at also. So that when people are voting on it, they've got a very good idea of what we intend to spend the money on. I, I think if you leave it to, if you're asking for an open checkbook, I don't think your chances are very good at, uh, at being well received.
Very good point.
Um, I guess I'm feeling there are basically three options councils thrown out to this point. We can give you a, in fact, you've seen the list of streets that need improvements. We have the master thoroughfare plan that has future streets on it. So we do have that kind of information available to you all. I'm just, I'm not debating with you as far as which comes first, but I, I'm seeing that you all are pretty much making the decision or limiting the decision that this is the area that we're talking about. The next step, there's a couple of phases, I suppose, is the, the education to the citizenry. And that can certainly be developed with a group that would be interested in learning more about it, becoming informed, and helping provide that information. City can get, can give information, and that's as far as we can go. We can't go out and sell the
Correct.
the election, so to speak.
Correct.
So we can certainly put out the word that council's interested in hearing from, from folks. I'm getting some direction, though I believe from y'all, that you all need some information as far as exactly what are the parameters around the three or four? Or what are the ones that don't require a secondary board to be developed? And what are the limitations on how much can go to the which one, which of those, and how can it be used?
I only heard three.
So I can easily, certainly, we can condense what's been provided in the past and, and address that, send that to y'all and make you aware of that.
And just so everybody knows, that's on parts, when you buy something in Friendswood, that would be added onto the sales tax there. You'd pay another, uh, half-cent sales tax on your purchases in Friendswood, and so would other people. And like John said, it would help in the maintenance of our roads.
And you're the only city realm that's currently not charging that.
Correct.
So it's not like we're going to be higher than anyone else, we're just going to come up to the other one.
And I don't know why the history has stayed at seven and three quarters. Uh, I, I don't know why it stayed there. I know from a financial aspect, it'll free up a good chunk of change on the budget next time, next cycle through if, well, if this is what the city decides to do, you can do other things with that budget item being taken care of by this funding. And, uh, Go ahead.
I do, well, I do have another question. So, um, you know, when it does go out for vote, you know, I'm pretty adamant about the roads. And I think that that's, you know, that's an easy sell. I think that's something that, that should be addressed. Two things about that. I don't, I would not recommend or be supportive of having this offset something else in the budget, so you could free up something else in the budget. I think our, I think our roadways and streets are underfunded. I think that, uh, especially with the drought conditions we've had over the last several years, we didn't have enough money to, to take care of what we needed to take care of, because it wasn't budgeted for. So that, that being said, I, I, I would, you know, I, I don't want it to be where you're voting on the full, you know, half, half percent and three items attached to it. I would much rather see, you know, a quarter percent for roadways and let that pass or fail, and a eighth percent or a quarter percent for whatever other entity, and let that pass or fail. I think that, uh, that each item should sell itself, that, uh, the citizens should have a right to vote for each and not be saddled with an additional sales tax on one thing because they think roadways are important and that, that they should vote for that, or, or for that fact, whether it's CEDC or, or whatever else. So I'm in favor of language anyway, that when it comes ballot time, that you're voting on those three specific items, or two specific items, or one specific item, whatever it is, but not piggybacking them all together, so that something that I think is critical, like the roads, gets shot down because somebody looks at it and goes, seed money? No. You know what I mean?
Councilmember Rocky?
You know, when we started that committee for the bond, we, we just wanted to consider the idea of bonds, period. It was that committee that came back and broke it into four bonds and what the areas were and all that, and, and advised us to do them as separate bonds and all that. And I think we should just give that, that, that process the sa-, this time, the same opportunity. For them to come back, and I think they may very well, um, follow what Councilman Scott said, you know, break it up again, so that people can make sure they're voting for the things they want, but let's give them the opportunity to come back to us and having researched it and give us an idea of what we want. I mean, we, we, I think, as we said, we've given direction. There's only a certain amount, a range of things we're going to be allowed that money to go for, and then go off and take a look at it and come back and advise us.
Any other discussion? Item C, discussion with Planning and Zoning Commission, with the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding landscape and screening requirements located in Section Eight, supplement, supplementary district regulations of the zoning ordinance. Nick?
I think our commission needs to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Uh, notice of special invoker meeting, the city of Friendswood, planning and zoning commission, via Monday, January fifth, beginning at five thirty P M. In the council chambers and thereafter, in the second floor conference room, the city hall located in nine ten South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. Uh, it's a joint work session with council. We'll call that portion, uh, our P and C portion of order. Item two, discussion regarding Hemix C zoning ordinance, Section Eight, point I, landscaping and screening.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before the Planning and Zoning Commission goes and spends time and effort coming up with a recommendation to council on, uh, change the code that, that we believe is necessary, we wanted to just give you, uh, spend a couple of seconds here talking to you about what we want to do and, and get the temperature of, of the council on whether or not we should go spend some time on this. Right now, the city's zoning ordinance, if there are two different, uh, uses that abut each other, if there's a residential and a commercial use that abut each other, the zoning ordinance requires a ten-foot landscape buffer, uh, as well as an eight-foot opaque fence to separate those two uses. Uh, and that, of course, is to help mitigate any nuisances that might occur between commercial and residential, for example. In, in many cases, when we apply this in real-world situations, it, it's very clear-cut, makes sense, and is shown very clearly on a site plan. I should mention also that the, that requirement for the ten-foot buffer and the eight-foot fence is waived if the uses are separated by a public street, a drainage ditch, or a canal that's at least thirty feet in width. We wanted to show you a real-world example of something that's kind of unique and something that we feel needs addressed and, needs to be addressed in the code. If you look up here at the exhibit, this is an actual, uh, piece of property in Friendswood, right here, that's going to be developed pretty soon. To the left of that is a private drive that accesses this apartment complex up here. This private drive, as well as this apartment complex, are zone multifamily residential. This green space right here that's going to be developed is zoned commercial. They abut each other. The code says that if commercial and residential abut each other, you need that ten-foot buffer, you also need that eight-foot, uh, opaque fence. And really what we're asking the developer to do in this case is build a ten-foot fence right down here along this line, all the way down this private drive. And in addition to the ten-foot buffer. In this case, we don't believe it would make a lot of sense to do that, even though the code, the way it's read right now, is very clear-cut. Which is why we're making a suggestion here to change the code to simply, uh, add driveways and access easements to that exception rule, right? So if this access easement here is at least thirty feet in width, there would be no need for an eight-foot wall to go up and down this side here. The ten-foot landscape buffer would still be required if it was a private street, just like it would be with a public street. But what we're trying to avoid here is to create an eight-foot wall that goes along the side of this property. Because as you guys, as you might imagine, it would look a little bit odd, uh, to have an eight-foot wall running down the side of this piece of property next to, um, a roadway that accesses the apartment complex back there. We don't anticipate there's a lot of properties in Friendswood that are like this, but there may be more, and there may be more that, 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 uh, don't exist yet, that may end up existing in the future. What we're trying to do is avoid this situation in the future, and also, uh, in this particular situation, uh, should the cha-, the code be changed, the existing, uh, developer that's going to be building here pretty soon would not have to build that eight-foot wall. But we need to change the code first, and that's what the Planning and Zoning Commission wants to go do, is, is, is do some work to bring back a recommendation to council on how to change the code and eliminate this issue. So that's where we are today.
How wide's that road?
How wide's that road? At least thirty feet, but I'm not sure. Do we know? It's sixty feet? It's a sixty feet. Sixty feet?
Six.
Thank you.
Councilmember McGinnis?
The business or property to the left with the big building there.
Yes.
Now, that doesn't have a fence on the edge which abuts that road, correct?
Yes, sir, and it's been there a very long time.
So that's grandfathered.
It's been.
It would look funny to have a fence with one, but not with the other.
It would, very much so.
Councilmember Gustafson?
Is there some way to just handle this with a variance, as opposed to going through this process? I'm always worried about changing these ordinances, just, is there may be some unintended consequences that fall out.
There's certainly, there's certainly that option. In any case, you can go to the zoning board of adjustment.
I know where this is, and I know what you're talking about, and I thi-, I agree, it would be kind of goofy.
What we're trying to do right now is avoid that situation, where you'd need to go to the zoning board of adjustment. Quite frankly, and, and I think I'm, I'm not speaking out of turn here, zoning board of adjustment very rarely deals with zoning issues like this. They deal a lot with setbacks, they deal a lot with, uh, where buildings are situated.
Yeah.
But they don't deal a lot with, uh, screening and buffering and zoning and that kind of a thing. We can certainly, uh, if it's the desire of the council, keep the code the way it is and do this on a case-by-case basis. What we're suggesting is that we do go ahead and change the code, so that this doesn't, uh, become an issue in the future. We don't have to go to ZBOA before someone could submit and wait, basically, and see if they're going to get what they want, before they can get their building plans, uh, approved.
Mark, you guys, oh, Councilman Hill?
Yeah, the, uh, the zoning board, uh, appeals did hear this case, and they rejected it.
Okay.
And I, I'm not sure why, other than the fact that I think they've, my opinion is they thought it was their duty to enforce the ordinance. When I think their duty is to look at these projects on an individual basis and see if they deserve a variance, so.
So we're in the appellate process here.
Well, no, they've already, they've already turned them down, but I, I, yeah.
They were actually.
This is a, oh, twice, as a matter of fact. Turned it down twice. But this, uh, and, and I, and I heard both sides, I, I think the business man was willing to put up a, like a four-foot-high hedge or something.
Yeah, five foot.
Five foot, uh, but, uh, they didn't go for that either, so I, I think maybe it's our job to take some action and and get this right.
This is one of those, I know this is what it says we want, but what we really.
Our mayor protestant's correct. I mean, it went to the ZBOA twice, and in one case he asked for a reduction.
You answered my question.
Yeah, so it's.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Kevin, uh, you know, one thing, too, I think that Carl's concerned about, I think that the language we are thinking about proposing gives the latitude to work something like this him, but also, there might be circumstances where we would want that, you know, fence there. So I don't think we're talking about putting this in concrete ever that, you know, anybody could step up. I might be wrong, but it seemed like that was what we talked about the other night, so. Because I'm, I'm uncomfortable saying we would never want that fence there. There might be times when we'd like to say.
The commission still has to discuss it, so.
Pardon me? Yeah. Right by the party store. The, the party store, right before Bay Area. It's on the left. A new tire store's going in there. No, it's going to be a class operation.
Any other discussion? You guys got any questions?
I don't say that it depends on the ZBOA, that I don't think they really have a lot of commercial issues, and I think in a situation like this, if it pops up again, if, if, if we have some discretion to look at this, we can handle it and make it like, and make it an easier process for a developer to get through. And I think that's what staff has, uh, you know, come up with this point, because, you know, that's the direction that y'all want to go. Like I say, we, we, I think there's enough folks in this commission that's been around the horn a little bit, that if we know that there needs to be a barrier between commercial and. and residential, that will happen. But in a situation like this, quite frankly, I don't see a purpose, an opaque fence serves in this application. And if this was done, that would give us at least a discretion to do that, and, I mean, this might make sense, but y'all show us what you want to do, and we'll be happy to support you.
I'm, I'm with y'all. This, this doesn't meet the intent of what we were trying to accomplish, let me put that, so whatever we had to do to clarify it, or how best you guys think moving forward to handle these situations, I'm behind, but yeah, this doesn't apply in my mind.
We're going to pass a resolution after a while that this is the year of business in Friendswood, and, no, it gives you, it gives you guys a tool with which to be maybe a little more understanding of business needs.
So the direction is to move forward on this?
That is correct. That's what I heard.
That's what we're happy to do.
Thank you.
May I adjourn our portion over to you?
Unless you just like to stick around.
We'll have to come back at seven.
You get to, you get to.
Yes, we have a minute. I know y'all can hold it. Wonderful. Your commission, Mr. Mayor, I will adjourn our portion of the joint work session. Thank y'all very much, and we'll be back every day.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Item six, Closed Executive Session, Executive Session, or Executive Conference Room Adjacent to City Council, City Hall. Communication from the public regarding executive session topics. Council may convene into executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Code pursuant to section five-five-one dot oh-seven-one. Consultation with the attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation, white realty interest, LTD versus City of Friendswood. In section five-five-one point oh-seven-two, deliberating regarding real property, parkland development, legal advice only regarding potential development of real property located within the City of Friendswood in section five-five-one oh-eight-seven. Deliberation regarding economic development negotiations to deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect. We are so convened.
You didn't ask if anyone wanted to comment?
Does, oh, well, it's not, that's, it's not on here. Does anybody want to comment on our executive session subject?
It's on eight.
Communication from the public regarding executive session topics. I'm sorry, I missed it. It's on the split. Okay, we're, we're convened. Item eight, Special Recognition and Acknowledgements. At our retreat, um, last year, sounds like a long time ago, doesn't it? We discussed making 2015 the year of the businesses for the City of Friendswood, and tonight I've got a proclamation I'd like to give to CEDC, Mark Conrad, and Karen Capps, and I'll read it. I guess I should go over here to the microphone and read it. Whereas the City of Friendswood business play, businesses play a pivotal role in strengthening the community by providing necessary products and services, embracing innovative technologies, and employing an educated workforce to preserve the economic well-being of all our citizens. And whereas the City of Friendswood is pleased to recognize the accomplishments of our entrepreneurs for all sectors and all areas who choose to call our city home, and in so doing contribute greatly to the ongoing economic development of the city. Whereas the City of Friendswood believes local businesses are the backbone of our economy and the glue that holds communities together. And whereas the City of Friendswood seeks to demonstrate our commitment to, in partnership with our city businesses, to help power our city's economic development and efforts, and to express our appreciation to them for this vital contribution. And whereas the City of Friendswood recognizes the many charitable civic and philanthropic contributions made by our city business partners and supports their involvement in helping to sustain such charitable efforts within our community. And whereas the City of Friendswood, including dedicated city staff, talented city volunteers, and generous city residents, are collectively proud to support a business climate that encourages investment, job growth, and community involvement, and whereas it is fitting to offer the citizens of our great city a unique opportunity to recognize, celebrate, and support our city business partners for the essential role they play in moving Friendswood forward. Now therefore, I, Kevin M. Holland, do hereby recognize the year of 2015 as the year of the business in the City of Friendswood, and I call upon all city residents to help express in any way possible, and most specifically through patronage or collective appreciation for the profound contributions of our city business partners.
Mayor, I'd just like to say how proud I am that we have put that proclamation out there. Oftentimes, in the broader culture, in the media, in Hollywood movies, it's the businessman or woman who has made the foil, or the bad guy. And business, in many respects, is a vocation, and it's the business people that see a need, a potential that's out there of how they could serve their fellow citizens. So I personally am not an entrepreneur. I've not signed the front of the check, as they say, but my brother is, my father was. I know John and Jim on this council are, and I just think it's a great gesture that we've done together with our CEDC. So thank you to our businessmen and women, and thank you to our Chamber of Commerce in Friendswood.
Move on to the joint public hearing to receive, to receive comments from the public, both oral and written regarding: A) Zone classification change request for a property located at one-oh-eight West Edgewood, Galveston County, to change from Community Shopping Center. CSC, the Community Shopping Center Specific Use Permit, CSCSUP, to allow NAICS use eighty-one thirty-one, Religious Organizations, New Hope Community Church, Christian Church. And B) Amending appendix C, zoning ordinance of the City of Friendswood Code of Ordinances Regarding Amendments to Section Twenty, Definitions P, Home Occupations. And I'll turn it over to our chairman, Mark McLean, of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll open the Planning and Zoning's portion of the joint public hearing to occur at seven P.M. in the council chambers. Call our portion of order. Item on the agenda is to receive comments from the public, both oral and written, regarding: A) Zone classification change request for a property located at one-oh-eight West Edgewood, Galveston County, to change from Community Shopping Center to Community Shopping Center with a specific use permit to allow NAICS use eighty-one thirty-one, which is Religious Organizations, for the New Hope Community Christian Church. Is there anybody prepared to address the council and the chamber, either in favor or against the zone classification change request for the specific use permit?
Yes, I will.
So will you step up to the microphone and give us your name, please?
My name is Craig Crinion, C.R.I.N.I.O.N. I'm the representative of the owner of the property at one-oh-six North Friendswood Drive. That is adjacent to the property that's the subject of the rezoning. You should be aware that the property that's requested to be rezoned is subject to deed restrictions that were recorded in two thousand and five. There is nothing, according to the Galveston County Clerk, that has been registered indicating that those deed restrictions have been removed. Those deed restrictions prohibit use of the property for the house of worship. So if the rezoning is intended to allow any of that property to be used as a house of worship, that is prohibited by the deed restrictions from two thousand and five. If you have any questions, I will attempt to answer them.
No, sir, we'll take this issue if we can upstairs, if you care to show up upstairs.
It's up to you. If you'd like to, too, I can, otherwise I'll be standing by. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would care to be either in favor or against the zone classification change request for the New Hope Community Christian Church? Senator, seeing that, I will move on to item D, which is amending appendix C, zoning ordinance of the City of Friendswood Code of Ordinances Regarding Amendments to Section Twenty, Definition P, Home Occupations. Is there anybody that would care to address the council and the commission on item D, the definitions of home occupations? Yes, sir, please step up to the microphone and give us your name and tell us your thoughts, please.
I'm Al Saylor, and I live at twenty-one-ten Butler Drive, and I would like to thank the councilmen for your voluntary service and the members of the City of Houston for the work that you do. I'm going to speak against the ordinance as it is written, because I think the terminology, while the intent may be good, I think the terminology may be, present a threat or an offense to a business that I have. I have a small company that's involved in doing skydive demonstration jumps, and I think you all might be familiar with the Fourth of July event. We've had the pleasure of jumping into the Fourth of July event the last several years, bringing in the American flag, the Texas flag, and the flag from the City of Friendswood. And of course, the issue there is, you can't jump out of a perfectly good airplane without having a perfectly good airplane, and that airplane is maintained and kept in my hangar on Poly Ranch Airport. And so as I read the terminology that's been put forward, I'm looking at the question about whether I can maintain and operate my aircraft, because I have six cylinders, not one, in that airplane, and I think it may be a threat to the operation that I have of that aircraft. So my appeal to the council tonight is to reconsider and remove the terms of that ordinance that refer specifically to the number of cylinders of an aircraft, and I, I don't know why it wouldn't be extended to other operating equipment as well, but at least from my standpoint as a citizen, it would be a detrimental to my business. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else that would care to speak either in favor or against the proposed change to the zoning ordinance regarding home occupations? Yes, sir, please give us your name and your comments, please.
Yes, sir, Tommy Stoneman. I live at two-on-nine, two-on-nine Oak Drive in Poly Ranch. I don't own, I run a business out of there. I do fly an aircraft out of there, and I fly coast-to-coast, put four hundred thousand miles on aircraft in the last ten years flying all over the country, and a very relevant component in me being able to do that is to be able to hire an A&amp;P to come in and work on the aircraft. I have more than one cylinder on the aircraft, thank goodness, but this ordinance, as written, I think could infringe on my ability to operate the aircraft and therefore provide for my family. So I would ask you to reconsider the wording, maybe go out a different way, and not limit someone like me who's been in Friendswood for twenty-seven years, raised a family here, sold a number of pieces of equipment to the city that y'all now operate, and again, restricting the maintenance of a, of a piece of equipment with more than one cylinder would limit the ability for me to run, run my airplane and grow my business. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Is there anybody else that would care to speak either in favor or against the proposed change to the home occupation? Please give us your name, sir.
Hi there, my name's Dave Forster. I like the previous two commenters. I think the, the intent here is good, but I'm afraid that the wording might get in the way of, or cause some unanticipated effects. As an example, I have a car that I've been building as a hobby for the last couple of years, and the other day I had a friend come over to give me a hand, do some of the welding on it. Well, I took him and his wife out for dinner as a thank you, but what if he had asked to be paid for that work that he did for me on my vehicle in my garage? As I read the proposed wording, I think that might be a problem. I also have another vehicle that I keep at a neighbor's property, and as I read this wording here, I would be prohibited from working on my vehicle to the extent it was located on my neighbor's property. Again, I don't think either of those two things were intended to be prohibited by this change, but as I read the wording here, I think by the letter of it, it would be, and that does cause me a concern.
Is there anybody else that would care to address council and commission regarding the definitions for home occupation? Mr. Mayor, here, seeing that, I think the commission will adjourn. We will close our portion of the joint public hearing and are upstairs to complete our meeting.
And are the three gentlemen that just spoke from Poly Ranch invited to share their thoughts with you additionally upstairs? Okay.
Absolutely, ma'am.
Yes.
When we adjourn upstairs to complete, we have a meeting scheduled. We'll take both these issues up again. Anybody that's spoken tonight that would care to go upstairs, you're personally welcome to, and we'll come to those on the agenda and take any other comments that you care to make upstairs.
Thank you very much, commissioners. Item ten, Communication from the Public to Comply with the Provisions of the Open Meetings Act. The City Council May Not Deliberate on Items Discussed. I'll wait till they get out there. Okay. Bless you. To comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the City Council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during this citizens' comment period. God bless you. First, the only card I have is Don Johnson.
As many of you already know, my name is Don Johnson, and to try and keep within the time limits tonight, I've kind of stretched out a short statement here, and with your permission, I'll just go ahead and read it to try and stay within the time limits. This evening, I'm here to ask for your support to appoint me to the Harris-Galveston Subsidence District. About four years ago, I was asked to represent Galveston County on the Subsidence District Board. At that time, some county officials were concerned that business practices of the district were outdated, and the policies pertaining to disincentive fees for over-pumping posed a potential threat that could bankrupt utilities if there ever was a prolonged service outage from the Southeast Water Plant or Gulf Coast Water Authority. So instead of the usual appointment, the county commissioners appointed me to that position to see what positive changes could be made. In part, I was chosen because of my understanding of the utility business acquired during my term as a director of the Cleric City Water Authority and as an in-depth knowledge of flood control and subsidence issues acquired from a long-term association with the Army Corps of Engineers on the Clear Creek Citizens Advisory Committee. Due to time, I'll, I'll try and just give you a couple of quick examples here. To modernize the district, a sea change in leadership was necessary. While many believed it to be impossible, I dared to ask the board to consider succession planning for the general manager position. Note, the prior general manager had been there thirty-five-plus years. It took a while, but this was a successful effort, and a new GM was employed. Later, I dared to ask for a position and salary review of all employees by the new GM to assure the district was not in excess of industry standards for comparable positions. At that time, the district had more directors and chiefs than workers. This resulted in many changes in the organization, structure, and salaries were aligned where necessary. Also, employee benefits were far in excess of industry standards and have since been modified. modified. As one of the few conservatives on the board, my position on fiscal matters is far different from the other gentleman vying for this position. He supported deficit spending from the district's general fund for the past five years. I have one of the presentation packets here showing that, if anyone wants to see it. In 2015, the projected deficit was going to be $226,300, and it varies on out to 2019 where the deficit is projected at $387,603. Also, I oppose the raising of the emergency permit fee to an amount more than double, from $200, $500, with the justification that some applicants may be frivolously using this option. This obviously penalizes everyone for the perceived sense of few. Again, the other person vying for this position had no problem with just rubber stamping this request for GM. In short, the board can't afford to lose any of the conservative voices at this critical time. Unfortunately, time will not let me go into any other details. Let me close by saying, I am a Friendswood resident, the other person is not. I've seen many of you frequently at the wonderful events here in our community, such as the parades of Fourth of July, and of course, the monthly Friendswood prayer breakfast. With some of y'all, our children have even gone to school together. It is very important for me to earn the support of my hometown. If there's anything I can do better, just let me know. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak here this evening, and if you have any questions at any time, please let me know, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? Move on to item 11, communication from committees and special reports, annual report from the zoning board of adjustments, Chair Rundire.
You're welcome to throw a card up at any time. This won't take long, though. We only had, uh, three applicants last year. Rundire, uh, sitting chair for the zoning board of appeals, and, uh, I think this is the fifth year, and I think it's about time for somebody else to do this, and if we get to item 13 tonight, that might be the trick. Uh, as I said, I think in your background, you had the, uh, the history for those three, but very quickly, uh, you'll see that the one that was on Centerfield Drive, there was, had been an issue with the, the, uh, 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 application for a permit, and there had been an issue that there was a mistake made when the permit was issued, and they used the wrong, they used the deed, uh, the deed restriction instead of the city restriction when they got the permit for the line, and by the time it was caught, the actual, uh, construction was completed, so the zoning board went ahead, uh, the zoning board of appeals went ahead and allowed the construction to, uh, gave, gave them their variance. Uh, the other one on Blackhawk, that was a pure pleasure. I enjoyed doing that one. That house, uh, actually had burnt down and had to be destroyed, and this was in an older neighborhood in Blackhawk, and the, uh, house, I believe, had been annexed into, into Friendswood, and I believe it was in 1985. And originally, those houses only required a five-foot side setback, and, uh, when they went to rebuild, of course, when it had been annexed, now it requires a 10-foot setback, and they couldn't build their house. So we were more than pleased to allow them, the variance, to build their new home. That was a pleasure. And then this last one was the one that y'all are considering for an ordinance change, and that was the one, the property there on 528, and that actually turned into two different, uh, appeals, or two different, uh, it was on June the 24th, and then again in July, two different applications, and, uh, that's the one you're considering for an ordinance change, where they had, uh, applied, um, the commercial property set right in front of the apartments, and you were asking, can they ask for a variance? Of course they can.
I didn't get it.
Yes, and you, and, and the, the private road that accesses to that, uh, multi-dwelling residency apartments, uh, is the private road, of course, that accesses, and because it's in what's called a COD, the Community Overlay District, they are required to have a 15-foot setback on that road. And, uh, they had requested for the commercial property to, uh, reduce that to a 10-foot, and they had also requested, instead of an eight-foot, uh, high-density vegetation, to reduce it to a three-foot high-density vegetation, uh, on that, on that road that accesses into the apartments. The apartments were represented that night. They had an individual that represented, and they had no problem with, uh, reducing it to a 10-foot on, uh, parallel to that road. So the ZBOA had no problem in granting that variance. However, the representative did ask to maintain that eight-foot dense vegetation, uh, for screening, it's called screening vegetation, and it was a request for privacy and noise. So the ZBOA did not allow for that variance. Then they returned on the 22nd of July, and I could not be here for that one, as it turns out, my wife was in the hospital, and I could not be here for that, and the same individual, and his tires by design, had asked that if they could not have the eight-foot, could they reduce, uh, dense vegetation, could they reduce it to a five-foot dense vegetation? And, uh, as it turns out, there were three different alternates on the board, so it was almost an entirely different ZBOA that night, and again, it was denied. So, uh, for, uh, the same reasons, the, um, again, for privacy and for, um, as a noise barrier. So that is why it was denied, at least that was the rationale. So, uh, you ask if there, if there is, um, in the annual report, they always get if there's any problems. We were one short for an alternate, but I found out tonight, we're not anymore, thanks to Councilman Hill. We have that taken, uh, that problem taken care of. And then there was the other issue, we were waiting to see what the council has decided, and tonight, it looks like you're going to decide what, uh, they're going to do with the, the chairs and the committees, how they're going to handle that, so, uh, that's the end of the report, if there are no questions. All right. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ron. City managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of items, first of all, quickly, the annual tree giveaway that's sponsored by Keep Friendswood Beautiful will be held at Friendswood City Hall Saturday, January 17th, from 8:00 to 10:00 in the morning, dot, 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 or until all those trees are gone. So I can almost, uh, I'm not a betting man, but if I were, I'd be here much sooner than 10 o'clock, uh, if you want a tree. Uh, these are not small seedlings, we're talking about, uh, over 100 container trees that some are up to eight feet tall that'll be given away to residents. Uh, only one tree per family, and they must provide proof of residency to pick up a tree. While the trees are free, KFB does appreciate any and all donations to help their projects. Uh, secondly, library pavers, the library expansion and renovation is coming. Brick pavers will be installed around the library's exterior, and the library is inviting you to purchase a brick paver that will be installed in either the new main courtyard or the children's courtyard. Pavers are four by eight inches in size and cost $100 each and can be inscribed with a message there, your name or what have you. So you can go to our city website or call the Public Library for more information on that. Every year in December, and I'm like the mayor, it seems like yesterday, that was last year already, the city recognizes its employees for their years of, of service, their dedicated service to the city, and these awards are given in five-year increments, and I appreciate those of you that were able to be there at that, uh, party for your attendance and, and helping present those awards. Friendswood Community Church provides their facility each year, and we're very thankful to them and appreciate them being such gracious hosts for that event. This year, we had an unusually large group of employees, 30 employees were, uh, were recognized, were receiving awards in five-year increments, and I'm going to just read the names of nine of those that have, that received awards for at least 20 years of service. Beginning with 20 years, David Brechtel and Doug Lowersdorf from the Police Department. Uh, 25 years, Matt Riley from the library, Domingo Rubio Jr. from Public Works. Uh, with 30 years, Johnny Guerrero with, uh, the Police Department, Savino Chapa in Public Works. And 35 years, Lou Clozier in the Police Department, and Arturo Luhon in Public Works. Mayor Protim graciously presented an award to me for 25 years of service, and I appreciate the opportunity to have been here that long. Uh, he acquitted it to dog years or something else, I think.
He's one of the dogs.
Uh, with, with that, I do appreciate the opportunity to serve here. Got a, begging your indulgence, three minutes or less, and, and one of you says that's enough, then we'll make it less, but our Santa in the Park event was extremely successful this year. If you're able to be out there, you know the crowds, the size of the crowd that was there, and in three minutes, we're going to show you a video that I can almost assuredly will give you a different view of this event than you have ever had before. So Jeff, if you'll get that going, hopefully the technology works.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, I want to recognize community services for, for the hard work that they do throughout the year, but, uh, December's an exceptionally busy month for them, and, and James and his folks did a great job, and all the volunteers and the businesses that helped sponsor that event, and that video was done by the Power Techniques Company, I believe, James, is that correct? Uh, who, they, they did have one of those.
Correct me if I'm wrong, James, but that's the new Power Techniques Company we're going to be using for the Fourth of July this year for the first time, and this is the first demonstration they've done for us. So that gives you a taste of what our Fourth of July celebration is going to be like.
This was their trial run, and we think they did an exceptional job, and when I saw that video, I thought, I've never seen a video in Friendswood just like that, so wanted to, to make that available to y'all, so appreciate that.
Awesome, thank you, Roger. Thank you very much. Councilmember Rocky.
The Santa in the Park thing is terrific, and it's fun to see all the kids join themselves, and, and you guys have put it on, it was outstanding this year, and I do want to mention, I was really impressed with the police department. I don't know how many officers you have, but they, they very effectively did the job, they were walking around and on bikes and stuff, and not obtrusive, but I know there were some lost children and other things that had to be found, and they did a great job on that, too, so.
I appreciate Councilman Rocky mentioning that, and we do, ditto that, that, those guys do a great job. Does not come without cost, and, uh, it's a, it's one of those requirements, you have a great event like that in a large crowd, you've got to have it well policed, and our guys, our folks do a great job.
Excellent. All right. Item 13, discussion and possible action regarding reinstating the appointment policy for boards, committees, and commissions with amendments. Do I hear motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go have a second.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Rocky.
Uh, I, I've read through this, I think, um, you know, we have some people who have long-served on our boards, and that's terrific, and we'd like to keep them, but I do think that we're benefited by having, uh, a little more coherence to expected terms and people who are in leadership positions, and I know that, uh, a number of years ago, we suspended it, uh, because we're having difficult, difficulty with, with that, but I think, I think we should follow, we, we should reinstate our rules, and I think then it'll be up to us to, if we have to work a little harder to get volunteers for committees as, as positions change, I think that's, that's worthwhile, so I, I, I support these changes.
Councilmember McGinnis.
Mayor, I agree, uh, it's time to reenact, reinstate this policy. I, um, still have a disagreement, and perhaps we'll offer an amendment in a minute, but I still think we ought to continue using the guidelines of the Open Meetings Act for all of our committees, including the advisory committees, uh, just to minimize expectations and confusion among the public, uh, because most citizens probably, you know, don't make the distinction between the different types of committees. I don't know, Melinda, maybe that would be more of a chore for you to, to, to do that, but I think it would be best to keep these, keep the processes uniform, even though it's not required to follow the open meetings, uh, guidelines for all of our committees. We also had some comments that we received from our committees, and I think one of them was that, uh, can the chairman or chairperson do an interview with a potential applicant before it gets to the council liaison, and I would support that. There is another comment that suggested that the council liaisons should be evaluating the performance routinely of these people. I don't think that's a good idea. It's not in the policy as written, but it was in the comments that we, we received. And, uh, thirdly, I just think that all applicants should be formally considered, you know, even if they've been on the list for a year or two, we should be sure that we give everyone an equal shot, not, so there's no favorites or cherry picking. So those are my thoughts, right now, I haven't made a formal amendment, but I just want to hear what other members have to say.
You want to see if anybody else wants to say something?
Yeah, somebody else go first.
But you can go. Thank you.
Councilmember Gasts, are you okay? Go ahead.
Uh, Council, Councilman McGinnis, I'm just a little concerned on advisory committees having to follow the Texas Open Meetings Act. It's not only posting the, um, the agendas, which is additional work, but it means then that, um, somebody in the meeting has to follow Robert's rules, and there has to be some other considerations, and they're not legally required to do this, advisory committees, and I know some are more structured in their approach than others, and some, you know, people just kind of show up and they, they want to talk about whatever they want to talk about, and if you, if you put them under Open Meetings Act, they can't talk about something that isn't on their agenda, and I think we, I think we kind of hamstring the process when they're, when they are only advisory. Now, I know that P and Z and ZBOE and- Now, I know that P&amp;Z and ZBOE and a couple of the others have to, because they're, the regulations do, but I think in the case of that, I would, I think we're going to put them under some restrictions, they're going to have difficulty meeting.
Councilmember Enoch.
I'm in agreement for bringing this back, because I think, you know, with time, issues will come up, and we need a document like this in place as our, our standard that we measure ourselves against and we make decisions from. However, I, right, you know, bringing it back as is, it would apply to all boards, commissions, committees, and I don't feel it should apply to all boards, commissions, committees. I think this is more of a legal document, and it should only apply to those committees where the folks are considered officers, like the Planning and Zoning, the ZBOA, the Charter Review Commission, where it's, they're acting in official capacity on the city's behalf. They're changing rules, or changing procedures, or changing codes, or making recommendations to us. You know, the other groups, like Fourth of July Committee, Keep Friends Beautiful, those are truly volunteers and volunteer groups, and I don't feel it's any of any value added or any benefit to hamstrung them to just these stringent requirements. And it gets us in a situation where people who are wanting to do good things for long periods of time can't do that, and I don't think they should be hindered when it's a truly volunteer-type position.
Any other comments?
Well, I just thank Councilman Rocky for saying what I was going to say, which is why I let you go first.
Councilmember McGinnis.
Is the CEDC one of those committees that would not fall under Open Meetings Act?
The three that would fall under are Planning and Zoning, Zoning Board of Adjustments, and Construction Board of Adjustments.
So I, I can just tell you, I have sometimes gotten feedback about the CEDC, that people feel like they should have more ability to participate there, or that they're not allowed to participate, et cetera. So I think I've said my piece.
Okay. Councilmember Enoch.
The last thing I left off is we have a new procedure coming out regarding to being a volunteer to the city, that should be rolling out anytime soon, and it's a, a very needed and a well-written document. Roger, I appreciate you getting that out, circulating to us to review, and I, I think that document would, would be the appropriate document to govern those other committees and boards that don't have elected officers, that I was recommending wouldn't be subjected to this, this procedure.
Appreciate that. I want to acknowledge Councilmember Rocky's contributions to that early on. Appreciate that, and today's city attorney as well, and it has gone out, or is going out. It's gone out to the staff, and some have gotten it to, to committees, others are in the process of doing so.
Okay. I have a question. Why did we suspend them in the first place? Does, I mean, does it go back as far as you? Does it, you, for you? You the only one that can?
I was there, too.
You were here, too? You guys tell me why? I, I just want to know, I mean.
I think it got to, it was more around the appointments and reappointments of the chair and vice chair, and the rotation of that, and there was another issue of somebody's residency in the city that caused a big conflict. And there is also some concern, some concern about people that had been on the list but never got a call back, never were asked to interview, and there was a concern that they didn't get a fair shot. So we suspended the, we suspended the policy at that time.
Mr. Ray, that's, that's, that is exactly, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, about people not getting a fair shot, it's very difficult for the chairman of a committee or the council liaison to call and contact everybody that has applied for every position. We've got a thing called caller ID now, and a lot of people, if they don't know you, they don't pick up the phone. And I think the system is working, and if people feel they've been neglected, well then they need to call some councilmen and make it known that they would really like to serve. So, you know, it's, it's, there's a lot of people applying, and I appreciate every one of them, but you can't pull them off. I, I sometimes think we should limit the time people can serve on committees, but there again, when you have these rules that one-size-fits-all, you're going to have some unintended consequences. We've got some people, Fourth of July, for instance, those guys have worked for years. They know what they're doing, and if you say, well, you've been here too long, you know, they just walk out with years and years of knowledge and experience. So I think the system we've got now is working fairly well.
I remember years ago, when we sat up, sat, well, three, four years ago, we sat back there and did two or three days of interviewing.
And then everybody from P&amp;Z.
Yeah, seven people at a time went through the whole list, so I think you get a good meet the person, explain what's expected of them, and, and make sure that they know what they're signing up for if they are selected. So I'm, I'm not in opposition to it.
What's the current motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion that we approve, we approve the changes.
We got the second.
I'd like to modify the motion to approve as written, excluding all boards that don't have officers that are appointed.
I'll second.
I don't know what that means. The quasi-judiciary boards, the Planning and Zoning, ZBOA, and CBOA.
And the Charter Review Commission. Those four would, would apply to this procedure, all the others wouldn't, I.
This whole thing just applies to them?
They're the only ones that have officers that are acting in an official city capacity.
The, I'm going to confirm, the Charter Review is not one that, they are an advisory committee, they're appointed every five, or every three to five years by council, and they will make a recommendation to you, but they don't have, they're not, they're not officers of the city, so no disrespect. The three that are, are P&amp;Z, ZBOA, and CBOA. And Melinda, I believe those are in the policy as, would have to, obviously this policy can't supersede state law.
Would you please repeat your motion? Councilmember Enoch.
So I modify the motion that this procedure be approved, and it only will impact the boards that are the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Zoning Board of Adjustment and Appeals, and the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
Okay, thank you.
To follow open, Texas Open Meetings Act, is that what you're saying?
To follow this procedure. That's before us.
This says they don't have to follow.
This says they don't have to, the rest of them don't.
Well, from the way I understand, if we approved this, this would apply to every city board, commission, and committee that we have in the city of Friendswood. So that would be ZBOA, Planning and Zoning, Fourth of July, Library Board, Keep Friends with Beautiful.
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec, so on. So I'm saying we exclude all those other than the ones that I.
But the only.
Councilmember.
I would just.
Councilmember Pat.
Mayor, I would disagree with Councilman Enoch's suggestion. I think this policy is for all of our various boards and committees. To say, okay, it's only going to apply to those three, I think would be a mistake. We need a policy that we can apply to all of our various boards and committees. To just apply this document to those three makes all the rest just kind of ad hoc, whatever they want to do. So I, I sense the group is against my idea for applying the Texas Open Meetings to all, but I definitely feel like we need a policy that addresses all of them.
Councilmember Hill.
Doesn't state law require them to follow the Open Meetings Acts?
Those three.
Not the advisory committees, no.
No, I'm talking about the, the ZBOA, the.
Yes.
Yeah, so they're covered by state law.
And the policy specifically states that all advisory committees are not required to follow it, and it states which committees are required.
Yeah.
In section 4.05. I, I think the policy adequately covers all our committees.
I like this as it's written. You want to keep the amendment? Restate your amendment, please.
I modify the motion to approve this policy, and it only applies to, let me get back to that section. Planning and Zoning, Zoning Board of Adjustments, Committee Board of Adjustments. Yeah, that's not the right one. Yeah, that's it.
Construction.
Yeah, construction.
CBOA, ZBOA, and P&amp;Z.
Yes. Can I ask for clarification? I believe you're referring to the Open Meetings Act's requirements. The policy as written would apply to all as far as, or, let me ask for clarification now, soon. The policy has things in it like term limits for chair of each committee and that kind of thing. Would you like, and as it is written, those apply to all committees, the only thing that sets some of them out are the Open Meetings Act requirements for those three committees that are, are those three groups that are official officers of the city.
Well, in a lot of our, you know, non-officer groups, we have volunteers where we're, if we put this in effect, we'll no longer be able to serve in the capacity they're serving. And since they're not in elected officer positions, I don't see why we would want to impact the chairman of the Fourth of July Committee, or, or there's other groups who are struggling with volunteers, and, you know, they may not live in the city of Friendswood, or, and that would immediately become enacted under this.
And I think some of the wording was a little bit unclear, but as it is, as it is written, Melinda, you helped put this together, I think it says that the, or, let me, it says that there is a limitation on all leadership of twelve years?
Yes, we, y'all had asked at the retreat that it be similar to council's terms, and that would be twelve years.
So that would be across the board for all committees, including those three that are officers of the, officers of the cities.
I hear Billy's concerned, though, he's concerned of losing the Fourth of July.
And, no, and I, I appreciate that, so that, I just wanted to make sure I understood, so that is certainly for consideration.
And James, correct me if I'm wrong, but that would devastate us on that group, and for no valid reason. There's no issues, no concerns to do so.
You just referred to leadership, though.
That's a piece of it, but I know we've had folks on that board that serve from outside of Friendswood as well, that would impact, that aren't in leadership capacities, that would impact them, because that, I haven't read this from top to bottom, but I remember somewhere in here, it says that to be on any of these, you have to be, you have to live in the city of Friendswood.
I think it's only those three.
Councilmember Scott.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I agree with your sentiment. I understand, I was on Parks and Rec whenever this was approved, and I think part of the issue was the Parks and Rec chair, and people being able to stay in their, in their positions on their committees, right? So reinstating this means that those folks are at that point term limited, term limited. I guess it would be retroactive to the date that we reinstate it? I don't know, that's something that would have to be discussed. I, I agree with, with Councilman McGinnis, that the policy as it is, I'm okay with. I think we're covered under the Open Meetings Act by the other ones, by state law. The question to get your head around is, is, you know, is, it was suspended because of the issues we had getting people into chairmanship positions in these committees, or, and/or, the continuity that would be lost if it were that some of those committee chairs decided to step down. So that's, I mean, that's kind of what you're weighing, in my opinion. So I can only say that I think that it's great that there are term limits on city council, and there's, great that it's term limits on mayor, and there should be term limits on federal government, and there should be, because at the end of the day, I realize that it may be more strained on, on city staff or, or members of those committees because trying to find the right leadership, and, and then you create all the infighting on who's going to be the next leader and all this other stuff. I think that's just part of the process. And I think if you've been in that position for twelve years, Councilman Hill, then, then you can, you know, you, you will have had an opportunity to impart, you know, your ideas, your values, your wisdom, your, you know, whatever it is, and pass that on to someone. So I, you know, I kind of support it the way it's written. I know it will be, you know, it could be Chicken Little, "The Sky Is Falling," now all of a sudden, you know, X, Y, and Z Committee Chair has to step down, and nobody wants to step up, and all that other stuff. So, you know, I think we have to determine when that clock starts. Does it go back to the date it was suspended, or does it, is it enacted from the day that we approve it to be reinstated? So that's my position.
Hold on. Councilmember McGinnis.
I think this is my third time to speak, is that okay, Mayor?
Does anybody else want to speak?
Yeah, he's spoken about four times, so.
You said your piece, you said your piece. Does anybody want to allow the other two guys to say a third time?
I certainly have no problem.
I certainly have no problem with this, though.
I just, we have some wiggle room. Section 4.06, it has the very sentence that the chair and vice chair may be rotated following the appointment or reappointment timeframe, but may not serve more than four years unless otherwise approved terms, unless otherwise approved by the council. So within the policy is a mechanism to rectify that if we're, if we come up to that situation.
And the same section specifies that only the officers of those three committees have to be city residents, the rest don't.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because I, I believe that's not accurate. I would believe those members of those committees would have to be residents.
Which committees?
The Planning and Zoning.
Yeah, the quasi.
It says, what this says is officers of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Zoning Board of Adjustment and Appeals, Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals, and the Charter Review Commission are required to be a resident of Friendswood. I believe that should say members of those committees.
I agree, I agree. But the rest don't have.
The Charter Review Commission are.
What section, what section are we talking about? Section three?
4.06.
4.06?
Yeah, then eighth or ninth line down. Zoning Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals, and the Charter Review Commission are required to be a resident of Friendswood.
Yeah, it shouldn't read officers, it should say members.
So where are we at in the motions here?
So we have to vote on.
I'd like a little clarification, if that's, if that's okay.
Oh, okay. Up there at the beginning where it says officers or members?
Mm-hmm.
Should just say members of each of the city boards, commissions, and committees will be appointed, da-da-da-da-da-da-da, and when you get down here, too, where it says officers of the Planning and Zoning Commission, should say members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Zoning Board of Adjustments, and Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and Charter Review Commission are required to be a resident of Friendswood. Those four.
And officers are, that means every member, because they're all officers?
No, there's a chairman and a vice chairman, and that would be construed as the officers.
But they're still all officers. Am I right? Because this is, this is something that.
For those three committees, all members have to be residents.
Uh-huh.
I think it's vernacular, I think it's the definition of officers.
Yeah, because they're, those, those particular people are all officers. The chairman on down to the non-chairman and the non-vice chairman, they're all officers.
But, but clarifying that is probably important. But clarifying that is probably important because the casual reading of it would make you think officers.
Think that it's just the higher...
Officers slash members?
Okay.
That would satisfy, wouldn't it? Are you good with that?
Is it possible for us... This question, can we state tonight whether, if we adopt it, the clock starts now? Because I think that allows us to have time to...
Bet it. Yes.
So point of order. I think that we need to vote on Billy's.
Correct.
Up or down?
And then we can make an amendment to the other one, yeah.
The original. Did you get a second?
He did. I seconded his call.
Okay. Are you rescinding your second?
No, we didn't vote.
Bring it up for vote.
Okay. Seeing no more discussion, all those in favor? All those opposed?
And I'd like to make an amendment. I think I was... I think I was the original.
You were.
I'd like to make two... An amendment with two parts. One is that we adopt this mo... We adopt this with the changes to sections 4.6 that we just spoke about, making sure that we clarify the officers and members. And second, that we adopt this with the understanding that the clock... Everybody's at year zero of their terms when this is adopted.
Seeing no more discussion, all those in favor? All those opposed? Nice work writing this. Thank you.
Thank you.
None of us will be around in 12 years, huh?
Jim, Mike.
To Jim, Mike.
Hey, Scott, it's my birthday, you know?
Discussion and possible action regarding the disposition of RFP number 201408 for the construction manager at risk of fire station number four renovation in addition new fire station at the public safety building. Do I hear motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Discussion and possible action regarding approving chapter 380 business incentive grant application for economic development with Destination Holdings LLC for Town Square Center at 3800 East FM 528 and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. Do I hear motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Should have to be unanimous. Discussion and possible action regarding approving an appointment to fill an unexpired term on the zoning board of adjustments and appeals. Do I hear motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Councilman Hill or Mayor Protem Hill, will you take... Excuse me on this one, folks. Okay, item 17, discussion and possible action regarding authorizing the mayor protem to execute a license and indemnity agreement between the city of Friendswood, Kevin Holland, Esteban Pena, related to the installation of a fence within the right-of-way of Crawford Drive. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, can you just explain it?
Sure. Crawford Drive is a roadway that currently dead ends into the backside of the forest of Friendswood on the north, northern end of town. The roadway has some large lot houses developed on it and will never be a through street. There are homes on the backside of it. Both the property owners, Esteban Pena and Kevin Holland, have approached the city about erecting a fence within a portion of their backyard, within the right-of-way of Crawford Drive, to discourage folks from traveling down there and just parking and stopping. It's currently been a nuisance at the extension of that roadway. It's not impacting city operations for our utilities out there, our Texas-Nexico facilities. It's not impacting traffic in any way, shape, or form. Staff recommends approval of the license agreement, and this is similar to other license agreement we've done elsewhere in town. They will be responsible for maintaining that structure within the right-of-way as well as should we need to get in there to repair or replace a water line or any other facility, we will take down their fence and they will be responsible for putting it back up if they so choose.
Couple of other things I think worth to point out is that the property owners will be incurring the cost of this fencing. The city will not be incurring any cost.
Correct.
And then either the city or the property owners can cancel this with 180 days' notice. So if for some reason something changes where this is no longer valid, we can... We have an option to remedy the situation.
Correct.
Any other comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? Passes? You better get here. I kind of like this. It's your birthday.
Oh, that feel, Mayor Protem?
His veins are bulging a little bit.
Nine years and I finally got a chance.
18. Consideration and possible action regarding ordinance number T 201437, second and final reading of an ordinance approving an amendment to chapter 54 of the code of ordinances relating to the prohibition of illicit synthetic drugs. Do I hear motion?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I did. I sure did. Sorry. Resolution. Consideration and possible action regarding the following, resolution 2015-01, a resolution of city council of the city of Friendswood, Texas, establishing and adopting the economic development policy for the city.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Discussion? Councilmember McGinnis?
I just want our citizens listening to know that, you know, under our mayor's leadership, we've had a series of retreats with various committees, and one of the most productive ones has been with CEDC. And this is part of the fruit of that close working relationship with them. So again, in that theme, that 2015 is the year to celebrate businesses. I'm glad that we've come up with this resolution.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Rocky?
And tagging on to Councilman McGinnis' statement, the CEDC and the people in the city that work on this will be taking the policy and bringing to us various details and tactics and measurements and metrics and stuff as the policy calls for. So it'll be an exciting time to get all that.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Item B, resolution 201502, a resolution of the city council of the city of Friendswood, Texas, determining that land is needed for the construction, operation, and maintenance of a future park, accepting the dedication of said land from the estate of Lundie Land LLC, property owners.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Now I'll get... Go to 19. Ordinance number 201437, second and final reading of an ordinance approving an amendment to chapter 54 of the code of ordinances relating to the prohibition of illicit synthetic drugs. Do I hear motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Should have to be unanimous. Ordinance number 201438, second and final reading of an ordinance amending appendix A of the code of ordinances of the city of Friendswood. Do I hear motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
No, second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Unanimous. C, ordinance 201439, second and final reading of an ordinance amending appendix D of the code of ordinances of the city of Friendswood. Do I hear motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Councilmember Rocky?
I just have a question. This is for the changing of the water and sewer rates. We've been talking about this several months. But has that already been adopted on the bills? On people's water bills?
The original changes that were recommended were adopted October 1st. There was a change, however, to the irrigation rates. We saw that they needed to be adjusted more in the customer's favor, quite frankly, that there was a demand charge, but there was no consumption allowed in the minimum rate. And last month, you voted on first reading to approve a minimum consumption amount. Is that fair?
Yes, that'd be correct. And those that were already built, it's effective after this. We're not going retro.
So what... This doesn't represent... Or you haven't seen this?
I saw it, but I didn't do the calculations to see if that's a new rate or the original.
But I'm puzzled by the gentleman that spoke earlier because his bill for September through November is lower than his previous bill. But he was talking about it being 80% higher.
The rates were in effect... Went into effect in October.
Okay.
I don't have a copy of that with me to see.
Right, so it's...
Charge went from 7640 to 9065 on the sprinkler services. That's, I think, what he's talking about.
You know, those... I'm sorry. We didn't have an opportunity to question it, but, I mean, my water bill goes up or down $100 any given month, depending on usage, when the meter is read or estimated and all that, so I'm...
Councilmember Hill?
I had a neighbor that complained to me about this, and Renee, we had people check into it, and they have... You've got to have over a 1-inch meter for this minimum fee to apply to, which I think is $45 a month.
Five, one, please.
Yeah, but it's $90 for two months.
Yeah. This is...
Forty-five, forty. Anyway, you know, and I was explaining... First of all, her bill is $500, and when I looked at her bill, I said, "Well, you've got $370 worth of water that went through this 2-inch meter that you said you never used. Oh, I forgot I had a leak." But anyway, there are options. He can reduce the size of his 2-inch meter to a 1-inch, and he doesn't have to pay the minimum charge of $45. It goes down to, what, 30 for just a 1-inch? Anyway, it's... There are options for these people that have these... A 2-inch water meter is a big water meter, but there are options that they can reduce the size of it, or they can elect just to go with one water meter. But if they go with one water meter, they got to pay the sewer rates. So it's something they really need to study. And I don't know the good answers, but if you've got two 2-inch meters, you're going to have a pretty good minimum water bill. If you have two 2-inch meters on one house, you're going to be looking at $180 a month before you buy a gallon of water.
And one thing we need to remember, too, is that these rates are conservation rates, which was a completely different concept from where we were. When we had a flat charge, so there's going to be some learning curve, too, and to, you know, how best to manage your usage.
And that was... That's the reason for this motion is there was a learning curve on our part, too, because initially the base charge included 1,000 gallons. And whereas this change is going to make it to 3,000 gallons?
In that, there was no gallon included. It was just the volume method rate.
So it'd be the base rate and then plus whatever you use.
Now we include a 3,000 gallon per month.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Mayor, can we ask the staff to work with Mr. Crinian and go over this bill and just double-check everything that we've done everything right for him?
Dennis Campbell.
Campbell, I'm sorry.
Yes, I spoke to Mr. Campbell earlier this evening and told him I would get back in touch with him.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem Hill did make a good point, though. The difference in a 2-inch meter and a 1-inch meter is 40... Roughly $45 a month versus $1,500 a month.
Do we know whether this guy's got a...
He has a 2-inch meter, I believe.
And keep in mind that a 2-inch meter has got... It can draw four times the volume of water than a 1-inch meter.
Probably seven times as much.
No, it's four times.
Mr. Intermer. Do the circumference.
I just did. On this paper right here.
It is four times.
And keep in mind that when they presented the survey to us, it was these peak flows that was driving, you know, driving possible capital. And, you know, the bigger your line is, the more you can affect that, so... And we pulled the sprinklers out so they don't pay into the sewer part and all that sort of part.
Councilmember Scott, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, you know, the difficult thing about this is, as he mentioned, you know, he paid to have the water meter put in, and he had it put in because the old way didn't make sense because of the sewer charges. So these people invested money to get in line with current practices, and now we're taxing them for having gotten in line with previous practices. And I think it's, you know, it's kind of... It's arrogant to sit back and say, "Well, tough, just get in line." You know, I think that that's a tough pill to swallow, and I think that, you know, we got to be careful where we go with that, you know? So this whole water bill deal's been a mess since we started talking about it.
Do I hear motion to table it? Do we get a little... Since we're going through a learning curve, Patrick?
May I also mention one other thing? Now, granted, I wasn't here when we did the study, but one of the reasons that the study was done was because of subsidence district and the TCDQ. So as we talk of past practices, we're also getting legislation coming down onto us on how we use our water and how the drawdown effect affects everybody. So when they came up with the new rates, it's because of how legislation above is affecting us. So, I mean, sometimes business always the same way, and you make your business decision based on the rules that are in place. But at some point in time, you have to update your rules just based on how everything's coming down.
Yeah, don't you love government? Regulation, yeah.
Councilmember Rocky?
I'm a little confused at what people are talking about here is because what's in front of us is just the changing of the sprinkler system back, okay? Which actually gives relief to the people in the city. Where the original changes are done. Ordinance is done, and we're in there. That would have to come back as a whole separate motion to do anything different about that. And to be honest, and with all due respect to Councilman Scott, I thought we had a very sober, reasoned, factual discussion about the water. I didn't think it was a mess. I didn't think the discussion was a mess. I thought, actually, we did it very well. And as I recall, it was less than 1% of the city was going to get negatively affected. And these were people with bigger water lines is from the numbers. So I thought it was actually a good discussion with a lot of facts, well reasoned, and a decision. But tabling this amendment only tables the relief portion to the people on sprinklers.
Councilmember Hill?
I think we did get one letter from a citizen thanking us for making this change.
Yeah, they did.
Because it did include the 3,000 gallons. So...
And then we also, as we've told all of our residents, as we do every year when we go into the budget, we're going to look at, you know, what we have. It's... There's a bit of discomfort for us because of the new rates, knowing that we're going to meet our revenue requirements to cover, you know, our system costs. So we're going to be taking a look at that, and at that time, too, we'll bring back to see what's been the impact. You know, we know what our projections were, but then what's been the impact across, you know, our customer base? You know, where have we seen the biggest changes and things like that? And that's what we told our customers, too. We do this every year during budget, and we're going to be taking a look at it again, you know, here in a couple of months.
Okay, are we done discussing? All those in favor? All those opposed? And Cindy, you said you were going to help...
Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, I spoke to him and I told him I would give him a call.
And would you let us know what comes of that?
I certainly will.
Thank you, ma'am. Ordinance number 20... Ordinance number twenty-fifteen oh one, first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter eighty-six of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Friendswood pertaining to adjustment of water usage bills. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? First and final, ordinance number twenty-fifteen oh two, first and final reading of an ordinance adopting budget amendment five to the original general budget of the city for fiscal year twenty-fourteen fifteen to provide for supplemental appropriation and/or transfer of certain funds. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Yeah, on this one. Now there's Nick. What you got, buddy?
Apologize.
No problem.
Whatever it is, it was unanimous, seven and a zero.
Uh, huh?
It was seven to zero unanimous.
On the ordinance twenty-fifteen oh three, first reading of an ordinance amending zoning classification?
Yes, sir.
Okay. He said seven, zero, unanimous, in favor?
Six, zero, I apologize. We had...
Six, he only had six.
Yes, sir.
That's right, six, zero. Okay, let me read it first, and then we get a motion a second. Thank you, Nick. And did you...you guys did the home occupation as well, right?
That was also six, zero, yes, sir.
Six, zero, in favor?
In favor.
Okay. Ordinance twenty-fifteen oh three, first reading of an ordinance amending the zone classification of five-point-six-zero-zero-eight acre tract of land out of the partial replat of Friendswood Square Reserve A, located at one-oh-eight West Edgewood Drive, from Community Shopping Center, CSE, to Community Shopping Center Specific Use, CSCSUP, to allow for NAICS use eighty-one thirty-one religious organizations in place of prior ordinance number ninety-nine dash thirteen, which granted an SUP for used merchandise stores. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'd like it.
I...hold on. Who had the motion, John? I'm pointing, John. You pass on your...
No, yeah, I'm good.
Okay. You had the second.
Yeah, I would just like to note if P&amp;Z clarified the claim by Mr. Crinian that there are deed restrictions on that property, and what was the discussion about that?
There was discussion about that item. The city, in a zoning matter, cannot enforce deed restrictions. And so whether there were or were not deed restrictions, from the city's perspective, it's not something that would go into a zoning matter. So in this case, it's moving from our perspective.
Where does it go?
Where does the deed restriction...
Who would force this?
Well, in that case, it'd be a private civil issue. So there are instances where a city would enforce deed restrictions. For example, if there was a replat of a piece of property, and there was a deed restriction that said a lot couldn't be larger than a certain size, in that case, we can't violate those deed restrictions, so the local government code allows us to enforce those. But in this case, it's a zoning matter, and so because of that, we can't enforce...I mean, the church has been there for quite some time, and it has been zoned to be there. And what we're doing right now, because they are renovating that facility and, in fact, expanding it, and you might remember about a year ago, we changed our permitted use table to require SUPS for a church. So what we're doing is, while before it was allowed by right in Community Shopping Center, now it's going to require a specific use permit. That's what we're doing, is allowing the use on that piece of property. Whether or not private deed restrictions allow or don't allow for a church on that property is not something the city can enforce. It's a zoning matter that we're taking a vote on right now.
And they own the property?
Yes, the church?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I believe so.
Who are they having a problem with the deed restrictions? The AT&amp;T building?
Apparently, it's a neighboring property that the attorney represents, as we understand.
He said one-oh-six. West Friendswood... What is that? You know?
Sure.
Marat?
One-oh-eight, of course, is the church. One-oh-six is another lot within the original Friendswood Square plat in the...I'm pulling up the location map provided in the...one-oh-six is the AT&amp;T building.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember?
There's deed restrictions at Shopping Center? They're all open? And the church has been there for a number of years? I thought deed restrictions were typically...
There can be commercial deed restrictions, but it's not something the city's going to enforce in a zoning matter. So now, like I said, if there's issues of plating and a deed restriction says that a lot can't be a certain size, and yet they're trying to make it that size, we can enforce it at that time, but not in the case of a zoning matter where we're simply allowing a use by right in a piece of property, which is what we're doing here.
So let me... The past practice is to be the church there, and nobody's complained till today.
To our knowledge, yes, sir.
Councilmember Rocky?
Do we know offhand, if we take commercial property basically off the books for a church, what the tax impact is at for that?
It depends on a number of factors. You're saying the tax impact on a piece of property that was commercial that then turned into a church?
I'm very familiar with that property. It's very close to my house, and the church is doing a wonderful job there, and they own about approximately half the building now, or half the building space now, and it's a beautiful facility. And the rest of it is...well, throughout its past, that property has had difficulty keeping businesses going. It's probably not a good location or whatever. So business has been in and out, and probably half the property's been empty at any one time, and then something comes in, and it fails and moves out. But still, the possibility that you have commercial businesses that could be in there that would be paying property tax as well as sales tax, okay? Now, we're gonna basically convert the whole property to a church, which will have neither sales tax or property tax. I'm just asking the question of, you know, do we have an idea of what the hit is on that?
Not to my knowledge, no. We don't have specific numbers on what the hit would be. And frankly, a lot of it would depend on the occupancy and a number of other factors of the strip. As you probably know, the strip center itself is planned to be demolished, and that's something that's going to be on the site plan that's been submitted to us. But we don't know numbers as far as how much is going to be lost associated with the removal of the commercial and the inclusion of...
Making it parking lot, right?
Correct. And they're making improvements to the existing parking lot as well with landscaping and that kind of thing.
Councilmember Hill?
I'd like to ask the attorney, do you foresee any legal ramifications?
Not for the city.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'm sorry, no, no. I guess...I'm tempted to ask us to table this for a month to see if we need more information, but I...I guess let me make the motion to table it for one month to see where everybody's at on that. So I'd like to make a motion to table it for one month so we can get a little more information on any deed restrictions and other issues associated with that property.
Second? Motion to table it in the second.
Okay.
All those in favor of tabling? All those opposed to tabling?
Four to three. So we're moving forward.
So now, who had the original motion? Is that me?
Uh, who did have the original motion, Melinda?
That would be Councilmember Scott. And then Councilwoman McGinnis had the second.
So we're back to the original motion? Seeing no more discussion, all those in favor of the SUP? All those opposed? Should be five-two. Ordinance number twenty-fifteen dash four, first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C, zoning section forty, definitions, paragraph P, home occupation, by amending and updating the definition of such term.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Councilmember McGinnis, you had your finger on the button.
I do, but the order of precedent goes with the major...
The maker of the motion and then the seconder.
I have concerns about the residents that spoke today and making sure we get that clarified. As I listened to what they were saying, clearly, there's no intent by us to prevent anybody from owning an airplane and a related business, Polly Ranch, as well as other things. I think that was actually a portion of the ordinance we didn't change. The original ordinance had a engine size or something like that. And the point was just so that we didn't have people rebuilding tractors in their backyard, bothering the neighbors and that kind of stuff. And some of the things that were brought up, like having maintenance done to an airplane, that's actually not a business thing, that. But I would like to...I know the P&amp;Z gave us a go-ahead, but I would still feel like a little more comfortable if we could clarify in some way for people to have their concerns about their aircrafts. And I do want to say one other thing. Joe Massey, who is the guy that was here, he wanted to come tonight to listen to us and hopefully pass this, but he is...he's in the VA hospital. So he called me today to let me know that.
Councilmember Hill?
It says here that if you own the vehicle, boat, or airplane, you can work on it. So it wouldn't apply to these guys that have their own planes.
But if they're using the plane for a business?
It doesn't say.
I'm not talking about the maintenance, but if they're using it for a business, I think that was the concern.
No, it just says if they own it, they can work on it. Doesn't matter how many cylinders it's got.
It also, if I can add this, Councilmember Rocky is correct in that this is all framed in the context of a home occupation. So it really has to do with, are you running a home occupation out of your home? So if you have someone come to work on your airplane and your hangar, then, you know, that's clearly not a home occupation function.
Just like if they came to work on your washer?
If they came to work on your washer. Or if...I mean, clearly, the intent of that number in the ordinance number eight, and there are number nine, the new number nine, is that, you know, you don't want to basically open up your garage and allow people to come and bring their cars to you so you can repair it for money. This is an instance where you're right. I mean, if they own the vehicle, they can repair it. If they own the vehicle and someone comes to their house to repair it, that's fine, too. And also, we have to think about the enforceability from a staff perspective. You know, as is the case in almost all code enforcement cases in your community development department, it is complaint-driven. And so, you know, in the case of Polly Ranch, and this was discussed upstairs, if you do have an airplane that's owned by an LLC or by the person who lives in the house, and someone comes in to repair it, or if they go to repair it, there's no issue there from the city's perspective, so...
But is there no issue if they use it for a business, like the gentleman that had the skydiving business?
I don't believe the interpretation of staff would be that it's a home occupation in that case.
I don't see how they could interpret it that way.
I don't believe that any unfortunate action would be taken if it's specifically and clearly related to that.
You would have a problem if you lived in Polly Ranch and somebody else brought their airplane to you for you to repair. You were gonna get paid for it. That would be prohibitive, correct?
We could talk about a lot of hypotheticals, but essentially, if it's related to the home occupation, that's what this is trying to address.
Understood. Nick, where did number nine come from?
The original number nine, repairing racing automobiles?
Yeah.
Was something that was discussed a lot.
Okay.
And we tried to figure out why in the world that was there.
Because they're loud.
And I...
So you struck that?
Right.
I just remember when we talked about this years ago, and now we've gone over the other way. You know? I just think number nine shouldn't even be in there. Because we do have a noise ordinance, I mean, decibels, all that stuff.
There was a lot of discussion at the subcommittee level and at the P&amp;Z level about someone basically repairing other people's automobiles at their house for money. And that's what I think they were trying to avoid in riding in. And this is a tough one to...this was a tough one to ride, and I was...I mean, we were struggling over this one, quite frankly.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to appeal to my other council members that we probably ought to just strike paragraph nine from what we adopt tonight, maybe come back later with a revision. Again, full disclosure for residents listening, I also live at Polly Ranch, and yes, I thought of the idea that someone could have an airplane not owned by them, but owned by their LLC, in which they would seem to be in violation of repairing this. There's also an example, if a person is a flight instructor who might live at Polly Ranch and own their airplane, so that is a means to make a living, but they don't do it in and out of Polly Ranch, because at Polly Ranch, we have our own airstrip deed restrictions, because we, too, do not want to change the residential neighborhood characteristic of our neighborhood. There are situations where there are airframe and power plant mechanics, which is a peculiar, particular FAA designation, who live in Polly Ranch and help out with other people's airplanes, et cetera. So I just thought the wording of this was overly broad, well-intentioned, but overly broad, and should be struck from here. I think everyone that I spoke to in my neighborhood, because I knew they might be concerned, were A-OK with the idea of that overall, we want to increase the capability and availability of home-based occupations, but we didn't want to see our own freedoms limited inadvertently by this resolution. So I would like, after the discussion, I want to come back to this and offer an amendment.
Counselmember Scott?
Well, this is...I mean, this is part of what we got into when we had the discussion about amending this ordinance and changing this ordinance, and how do you make it so that it, you know, doesn't do one thing and then do another? And I thought we were pretty clear that, basically, we wanted an ordinance that said, that provided your residential appearance doesn't change, that you don't impede traffic in your neighborhood, and that you don't devalue your neighbor's property, then do your business. And so when we start adding things like this, we end up talking ourselves in circles because there's a thousand different ways to interpret it. And why do we even give ourselves that opportunity? What if a guy lives on five acres of property in a neighborhood and has a metal building, and he wants to repair cars for a business? If it doesn't change the appearance of his home or devalue his neighborhoods, you know, why are we prohibiting him from doing that? That doesn't make sense. So again, I'm upset at many meetings ago, and will continue to say it. If it doesn't impact your neighbor, which we have deed restrictions, we have sound ordinances, we have all kinds of nuisance ordinances, it doesn't impede traffic in your neighborhood so that you can get in and out of your property, and you didn't put a storefront up on the front of your home, then why would we prohibit people from doing that? I don't understand that. It doesn't make sense to me. So, yeah, you can strike item nine, and I think you could simplify the whole thing by just saying what I just said.
I think I speak for all of our staff when I say simplification is a very good thing. Just to be clear, if we did strike number nine, so long as the automobile, whatever the vehicle is, is repaired inside the accessory structure, that's fine.
Right.
But you don't need that because number six is already covered.
Yeah.
Number six already says you can't make noises, vibrations, and all that. So to John's point...
And number eight is to John's point on the...
Yeah, so you can't...number eight says you can't change the residential area. Number six says you can't make noise, smoke, whatever it ever. So it's covered. So as the original motion maker, I would like to amend the original motion that we accept this, but we strike section nine.
I'll admit my second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Gusterson?
I've stated this before, and I'm gonna state it one more time. There was no problem with this ordinance the way it was written. It was fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years old, and there were no issues with it. This came before council because two citizens in our city that I know of were prohibited from renewing federal firearms licenses. were prohibited from renewing federal firearms licenses, and that's the only reason they did.
Prohibited by the ATF, not by us, just so, for the record, prohibited by ATF.
By ATF, I'm sorry, yes.
But they used our ordinance as an excuse.
But the problem is, they used our ordinance to prevent renewal of their firearm licenses. It wasn't anything that we did, and I think we were sympathetic to these folks, certainly to Mr. Massey, and agreed to address it in the ordinance. And now, what we've gone and done is completely rewritten the thing, and exactly what I was concerned was gonna happen is popping up. We're getting these, all these unintended consequences brought before us, and trust, they haven't even started yet. I've just put in one line, similar to what you have in there for a daycare, making it abundantly clear to the United States federal government that the city of Friendswood has no problem with the gunsmithing business being run out of somebody's garage. End of story.
Seeing no more discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes. Communication from the mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Augustin? Councilmember Scott?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Mayor, and to the chief, at our holiday Christmas tree lighting, I happened to run into a couple of our Friendswood policemen, actually, it was a policeman and a policewoman, and I just simply thanked them for being on the job and doing a good job, because even then, with all of this hubbub growing nationally, I felt that our police forces were taking it on the chin. That was before the terrible execution-style murder of two New York Police Department officers. So, I just want to publicly thank our chief, and please extend that to the men and women who served the Friendswood Police Department, that we appreciate them. We honor their service, and we're thankful for them.
Councilmember Hill?
Ditto on what Councilman Rocky said about our policemen. Tell them to watch their backs at all times, I'm sure you've told them. But also, I'd like to say that I enjoyed the Christmas party with all the city staff and employees and their families. It was a great night, and to see everybody and their families, they're having a good time. Thank you.
Councilmember Rocky?
I just want to say I got the opportunity a few weeks ago to do a ride-along with one of the officers for four hours, and I was very impressed with, it was David Gonzalez, and I was very impressed with his approach. And if you haven't ever done that, you ought to do that, it's a lot of fun. And again, I do want to thank the police department for catching the individuals who had been, or the alleged individuals who had been,
Ransacking.
Ransacking people's cars. One of those alleged individuals was a longtime acquaintance of one of my sons, and wasn't surprised that way, so.
This was the first year in three years, I missed it, and I've been trying to do something for three years and finally did it. So, I apologize for not being there, and based on that video, Councilmember McGinnis had quite a surprise when those fireworks went off. I don't think you were anticipating it, but Happy New Year, chief, keep up the good work. Pass it on to your team, and I'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mayor?
Motion to approve. Second. You want to remove something?
Mayor, I'd like us to remove item A for individual discussion, and then approve items B, C, and D.
You okay with that, making the motion, Mr. Councilmember Hill? I'm okay with that as well. Any discussion on B, C, and D? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? And item A, endorse the mayor's appointment, reappointment of a director of the Board of Directors of Harris-Gallaston Subsidance District to fill a term expiring January thirty-first, 2015. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Now, look, can I talk first?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. This was brought to me, and I reached out to the current individual, Paul Mays, immediately. And he said that he wanted to stay another term. And I said, okay. And it's, it was requested by me to make this selection. Then I got the letter from Don, who I know as well. Nothing against one or the other, but I chose the man that was serving as the one to reappoint, and that's the long and short of it, quite honestly. It happened before I got any farther along, so. There's my explanation of my selection. Guys want to shoot me? I get it, I get it. I'm after getting things done. Councilmember Rocky?
I read through it, and I read through the regulation governing the Subsidance District, and maybe the attorney can help us, but I don't think, it states that the mayor makes the nomination, so I'm not sure we get a voice, the rest of us. I mean, I'd love to have a discussion, love to give you advice, I disagree with your choice, and the only question would be, was, would we be able to have that discussion and do anything? I mean, I just want to know.
Because of how the agenda is, and as approval by your endorsement, I can only conclude that it requires your endorsement, their endorsement. I don't have the statute in front of me to be able to frankly tell you yes or no. Whether it's being misread or not.
From a historical perspective, mayors in the past have made the appointment on their own, and I believe that's what it calls for, is the mayor's appointment. More recently, mayors have offered the opportunity for the council to weigh in and endorse their appointment, which is what this is, an endorsement. My interpretation is that it's still the mayor's choice as far as what he would want to do with his appointment.
Reading the attachment, it says Harris-Gallaston Subsidance District, Board of Directors effective April 2014. Under section D, it says the mayors of all municipalities in Gallaston County shall jointly appoint two directors from those municipalities. So, there, it sounds like it is the mayor's choice, but I assume we can influence that decision, ultimately, it's your choice.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Mayor, thank you for being so gracious in letting us air this disagreement, which, you know, the mayor and I discussed this a couple of weeks ago, so it's not a falling out, it's just a disagreement. I, too, asked the question, well, does the council have a say in this? And if we do, then I would like for the rest of our colleagues to at least consider Don Johnson, because I know he's genuinely interested in this. I don't know that I've seen Mr. Mays appear before ever. Yeah. And, you know, we know Don, most of us personally, we know he's a fiscal conservative, and he has experience serving on the board, and most of all, he's a Friendswood resident, and I think it would be to our advantage to appoint him. So, if you would consider changing your mind, that would be a gracious offer.
I feel obligated, since I've already told the individual. I don't, you know, I wasn't told that I needed to check with anybody. So, I, I mean, I made the phone call, and he accepted, and I don't think he's gonna do it another term, but I don't know, you know. Councilmember Augustin?
Mayor, have the ability to defer the decision to council as opposed to making it on his own?
I didn't hear your question.
Do you have the ability to defer the decision to full council as opposed to making it on your own?
I don't know. Well, it takes a number of votes of city mayors. Are you guys asking me if I want to eat crow on my word?
I support your decision.
I'd like to make a comment.
You did your due diligence, and I support your decision.
And that's where I'm coming from.
I'll make a comment.
You don't get to make many of them.
Yeah, I've known Paul Mays for probably forty or fifty years. He was a resident of Friendswood for at least forty years. And last year, Renee, Mo, and I went over to the Subsidance District on a couple of different issues. I thought it was ideal. Don was on the board, and so was Paul, so I knew, we had two guys that at least knew where Friendswood was. And I don't know why exactly Don left, but, and I do, Paul is probably older than I am, John. So, he won't be around much longer. But anyway, I would like for Don to seek this appointment next year if Paul decides not to run. But I'm gonna support the mayor since he's given his word, I think that's important.
All right. Any other discussion? Councilmember Rocky?
I would have liked to see Mr. Johnson appointed. I have due respect here, your position, what you, you know, that you already made, but just, you know, the camera phones or something, I would have preferred to have seen Mr. Johnson.
Need to take a vote, Dan?
Sure.
And the motion is to approve the endorsement, right?
Motion.
You know what, point of order. It's clear that the mayor doesn't have to take a vote, because he only has to make a recommendation, and it was originally part of the consent agreement, so. I don't want to take a vote and cause division, you know, if it's stuck under this point. And so, I would defer that if the mayor says he's made up his mind, that we not take a vote.
I think you have to, now that you voted to pull it out of the consent agenda.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, you're right.
So, getting point of order, what's gonna happen if the vote is not approved?
I hadn't thought that far ahead, I was kind of hoping it'd be unanimous in favor.
Based on the council, if it's read in the attachment, it's your sole authority, it's your sole discretion.
So, we may be required to take a vote because it's been pulled out as a motion, as part of the consent agreement, and it's not mine?
Yeah, and you have our opinions registered that way. Can I ask one question before we move?
Yeah, Bill.
I don't know Paul Mays, so it's hard for me to vote on him. Those that are our reps to the Subsidance District, the council liaisons, can we get any feedback on, from those two folks, on Paul's performance? Do they feel it warrants another term, or, I'm not sure who that?
It's a very big board, and I don't know if Don or Paul, either one, are gonna sway that entire board very much. I know Don says he's made some headways. I know he talked against this disincentive fee, that's one of the reasons we went over there. They have a disincentive fee that could bankrupt our city if the main water line from the southeast treatment plant broke, or terrorists blew up the water plant. We asked them to consider it, they still passed it. But we do have them on record as saying they would never enforce that rule against a city in an emergency. So, everybody needs to understand that, but I think it's just like this city council. Whatever one board says, one year, doesn't necessarily mean what the next board might do. All this stuff we do can be changed if the next board. So, I know they did, there was a developer that had been given permission by the city seven, eight years ago to drill, I think it was four, like eighteen-inch water wells in his subdivision to water flowers with, water grass. And we did tell them that we weren't for that, but by their own rules, they had to deny that because the rules state, if surface water is available, you have to use it. And the stated case was that we have, as a city, have spent millions and millions of dollars to have surface water, and they need to be buying it and not be competing with us. So, anyway, it's a big board, and like I say, I would like to see Don applied next year, and I wish the best of, we had the best of everything last year when we had them both on there, so.
But one option is the.
Person who made the motion can withdraw their motion, if you so desire.
Why don't we just vote on it and let the chips fall where they may? Because I think I know where it's going.
Don, nothing intended. All those in favor of endorsing the mayor's reappointment, signify by saying yes? One, two, three. That don't agree? One, two, three, four. Okay. Duly noted.
All right, adjourned.
Adjourned.